Good evening, everyone. I call the City of Prescott regular council meeting to order. It is Monday, November 10th at 6:00. Do a roll call. Mike?
Here.
Maureen?
Here.
Adam?
Here.
Dar?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
Lindsay?
Here.
Okay, would everybody please stand for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comments. The council received public comments on any issue that's related to the agenda. Limited discussion by the council may take place. Okay, hearing none. Next item is the consent agenda. The Tourism Committee minutes from October 7, City Council minutes from October 27, Planning Commission minutes from November 3, Tourism Committee minutes from November 4, General Fund balances for October, cash balances for October, paid invoices for October, approval of equipment modifications on water tower number one for lease through AT&amp;T, and approval of two temporary beer and wine licenses for the Prescott food pantry for fundraising events.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda items number 1 through 9.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to... or do we have to do the operating budget first?
We can do the presentation first.
Okay. Let's do the presentation on 2026 proposed operating budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So before you tonight is the consideration of our 2026 budget. The proposed 2026 property tax levy is $2,775,586, representing a 2.1% increase from 2025 and an additional $56,377. If you took the average home using Zillow, was what we used for a data source of 397,581, the approximate increase for each homeowner would be $61.66, or another way would be $15.51 per $100,000 value for an increase. So what are the key factors? Just to run through them, employee retention and marketing adjustments. This is our final major step of our wage adjustment plan that we started in 2022 when we did a compensation study. Cost of living increase, 3% for non-union employees and 4% for Prescott Police Union personnel. We have... we're seeing a large increase in the library department of $43,545, mainly due to health insurance premium increases and those wage adjustments within the department. EMS contract, we're signing a new contract with... that we contract with Through River Falls for EMS service for $27,772. We're partially offsetting some new construction growth. We're partially being offset by some new construction growth and state aid. And then one of the things that we also are looking at in terms of new revenue then is a $20 permit fee increase for both residents and non-residents for our compost site operations, which is largely due to the ever-increasing costs of needing to mulch and chip the site. So where does the city budget go? So one thing you will... I will note is this is total expenses. So our total expenses, and that includes all revenue, is just over... just under 4.5 million. So for instance, this includes all the revenue. We share our fire department, fire EMS with Oak Grove and a portion of Clifton, so that includes this, our Act 150 money that we get from the library, the state aid money that we get. So with that, 39% goes to Police Department, 16 to Administration. This year, we are moving all of our IT expenses to Administration as well, so this department has saw significant growth as a result of that. 9% to capital projects, 9% to Public Works, 8% to debt service, 6% to fire EMS, 6% parks, 6% library, and 2% court. So where do your tax dollars go then as... in terms of your own payments? Again, using that average of $397,581, for a city of Prescott residents, with that home value, you'd be paying $1,986 for city service. So the way that breaks down is 765 is going to police, 340 to general government and administration, 181 is going to capital projects, 177 is going to Public Works. And I always asterisk that because a large part of Public Works, it's our second-largest department, but it's largely... a very large part of it is being funded through water sewer and storm sewer as well, outside of property taxes. Then 167 is going to debt service, 127 to fire EMS, 112 to parks and recreation, 112 to library. We used to have other financing, and then $4 health and human services and $1 community development zoning. In terms of our financial stability, current debt limit for the community of Prescott, the City of Prescott, is just over $33.8 million. We currently are still maintaining our AA3 borrow rating. We have outstanding right now 12.1 million in general obligation debt, allowing us for a borrowing capacity of $21.7 million, or 64% of the available limit. For 2026, originally, we had planned borrowing $1.5 million for Orin Road repairs and for a trail addition. However, we are deferring that to 2027 as we pursue the Transportation Alternatives Programming Grant, so that's being pushed a year. The debt service levy is projected as a result to decrease from 394,950 to 376,484. However, these increases will be required in 2027 through '29 as we look at that Orin Road project, the future truck... fire truck replacement for engine number two, and then Court Street reconstruction. So large portion... or all that portion of funds isn't being removed because we are wanting to be... remain flexible. So for this year, it's going into a temporary budget line item to replace the tasers, half of that for the Police Department, which we'll talk about here. The other half is coming from General Fund Reserves. So our valuation for this year, we saw 1.24% net increase due to new construction. That's a total growth of just over $8.2 million. That... anytime we have growth, that obviously helps us with offsetting potential levy increases. However, one of the things that we did result this year is we lost state aid in the form of the expenditure restraint program. Mainly, this was due because in 2023, when we did a reevaluation, our mill rate dropped below 5, which per the program, you have to be 5 or above in order to qualify for that expenditure restraint period. So right now, our mill rate is essentially too low for us to qualify. So for the next year, we will not be getting expenditure restraint program funds. So unfortunately, that is why we're seeing state aid decrease. State highway aid is projected to increase by 7% or $19,933, and this is due largely to our higher capital spending, which factors into the six-year rolling average used to calculate highway aid. So a large part of that is the funds that we just took out to use and do locust, Elmen, Washington Street in the last two years are rolling into that average. As I mentioned, we are proposing within this budget to use 70,348 in General Fund Reserves. This is for a two main project. Half of it is going... or half of the funding for the taser replacement for the Police Department is going to replace the aging tasers for all of our swamp personnel, including updating the cartridges and batteries. And then we're updating our IT server upgrades to replace our outdated 2016 servers that need to be replaced for $34,537. In terms of our utility funds, our sewer utility is projected every year in balance of just over 4.6 million, which again provides us flexibility as we look to the future of expansion and other improvements. For 2026, the fund is projected to achieve a 5.8% rate of return. We are currently in the middle of a planning study with Cedar Corporation to evaluate the long-term need for expansion at those wastewater treatment plant. And so for 2026, the sewer fund budget projects to have a 65,223 surplus. This is down from the 193,822 surplus we saw in 2025, mainly due to the West Central Bio Cell, its processing fees. Those are... they just did an expansion so that they're increasing those fees. Those are monthly fee that we use to haul our sludge to that facility, inflation costs. And then again, we're keeping revenue flat. We're not proposing raising any sewer rates for next year. For the water utility fund, this is... we'll see the second step of our water rate increase for our water utility. This was approved by the Wisconsin Public Service Commission. We are expecting this second step to go in January 1st of 2026, so people would begin seeing those additional rates and their first bill at the end of March. This increase is estimated to be an additional $27.51 per quarter for an average water consumer in Prescott. And for average, that would mean 11,525 gallons per quarter. And this is just affecting the water portion of your utility bill, not the sewer or storm. Right now, we're projecting a year in balance to rise to 429,137. However, we are, as we are all aware of, working on treating and remediating our wells. So we are expecting to see new costs for well for maintenance and treatment, and then also those debt service payments for well number three that we're going to have through the Safe Drinking Water Loan Program. Additionally, as part of this, with our new utility rates going in, the first full rate case study that we've done since 1997, the finance committee recommended reinstating the full payment in lieu of taxes from... for the water fund to the General Fund, helping us to relieve some of the General Fund costs and offering offsetting impacts. So that would be in the Forgiveness of Mountain West before you tonight, one of the resolutions, for $72,307. Finally, storm projected at the end of 2025 to have a balance of 120,271, a decrease of 21,382 from 2024, primarily due to our 2025 million overlay project. We had a number of curb replacements that had to be done and fixed. For 2026, the Storm Sewer Fund is expected to have a deficit of 11,779, again due to rising costs of storm repair and maintenance. We are not proposing any rate increase in this fund, but we'll be looking at that again in terms of next year's budget going into 2027. Compensation and staffing, we're not continuing adding any new employees. Again, we are continuing employees along the pay scale that we adopted in 2024 after that compensation study. And as I mentioned, the 3% cost of living adjustment for non-union employees and 4% for Prescott Police. Within our capital improvement plan for... our approval for this year, we have $407,406. Parking lot repair for City Hall and Library is at budget at $31,863. Our vehicle replacement program for the Police Department budgeted at $65,000, replacing one of the lawnmowers for Public Works at 16, police training room improvements at 15, and Public Works three-stow garage at $142,051, and then Sunset Park improvements for $99,260. So with that, I'll turn it over. The recommendation is to hold a public hearing or open the public hearing, and then two resolutions before you for consideration. So with that, I'll turn it over to council for comments or questions.
Okay, now we'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll make a motion to go into public hearing for the 2026 proposed operating budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to go into... open the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do a roll call. Lindsay?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, public hearings now open.
Yeah, go ahead.
Come up to the podium, tell who you are, where you live, and what you want to talk to us about.
I'm not usually at a meeting. Anyhow, I'm representing the gathering place, and we've submitted a proposal or a request for some additional funding. Now, I think you all received the letter from Penny as to what the gathering place really does and its involvement, and it's just... it's a fine thing that has happened to the city. It's dollar-wise, I don't know how do you decide how... what the cost effectiveness is. But in addition to the information that was in that letter, there are 1,700 hours of people that have taken advantage of the gathering place, but there are several programs within the gathering place that extend out and benefit the rest of the city. There's a Santa's workshop where... I don't know if you're aware of what goes on, but there are gifts that are made for the manor. And the Memory Cafe is also a benefit that... it helps the city out. And I hope you see the reasoning and the need to find... add some funds to our pot, because we operate on a thin budget, but we do get a lot of things done. If you have any questions, groups here that will answer them, and shoot if you want, if I can help you with anything.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, well, it's not me.
I know, it's all of you.
Yeah.
But it is... it's vital.
Yeah.
Liz, you forgot to give us your name.
Oh, gee whiz. Thanks, I'm Liz Guberood. And moved in... I used to live out in Oak Grove and then moved into town two, three years ago, three years ago, I guess. So, yes, yeah, any questions?
Glad you're here.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we...
Please take advantage of our programs.
Beth, do you want to tell us how much that was approved for? $3,000?
Is it three?
I thought we did, but I wasn't positive.
Yeah. I thought so, too.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jana Cleary. I live here in town. I have been involved with the senior gathering place since its beginning, so I want to say thank you. I have met so many wonderful people and increased my friendship group. I think the camaraderie that exists between and the support is really, really good. If you know of anyone who's questioned it, just tell them to stop in. We don't collect dues. Once a month, we have a potluck, lunch, and we've been having businesses come in and talk to us about their companies, which has been really, really good. It's very good for us to find out what's going on in the community and for them to share what their businesses are doing. So it's really been helpful in that sense. One of the things we did a couple of years ago, several of us were talking and realized we played the game of canasta. Like way back in, when we were very young, we got some lyin' and got some information, and we started playing that card game. And then we bring in people that have never played before or want to learn something. It's really, really good. So we've really made a difference, I think, in the community. So I thank you for your support. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Any other public comments?
Motion to come out of public hearing for the 2026 proposed operating budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll do a roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Okay, back in. So then the next item is Resolution 60-25, establishing a water property tax equivalent for water utility.
I think we already went through that, didn't we?
We didn't approve the resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 60-25 establishing water property tax equivalent for water utility.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 60-25. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, do a roll call. Lindsay?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next item is Resolution 61-25, adopting the 2026 City of Prescott General Fund balance and levy for municipal for 2025, collectible, and 2026.
Motion to approve Resolution 61-25.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve Resolution 61-25. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, do a roll call. Mike?
Aye.
Maureen?
Aye.
Adam?
Aye.
Dar?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
Okay, motion carried, thank you. Next item on the agenda is report sustaining committees and commissions. Nothing for finance. Planning Commission, Planning Commission report. Matt, we presented the facade improvement program for businesses in the C1 commercial district. The city allocated $300,000 to TID4 funds for over six years, with $50,000 available annually to support exterior building improvements. So the forms were given to the commissioners at the Planning Commission meeting, and they need to have their scoring sheets in by November 26, and then the results will be presented at December 1st meeting to the City Council for approval on December 8. Also, we had the comprehensive plan updates on utilities and community facilities and land use. We're going to bring a lot of that back and rehash some of it before we actually, you know, approve everything. We did take some things out that weren't necessary, but it's all... it's been an ongoing thing this year, and Cedar Corp. has done a nice job bringing that forward. Did I miss anything, Matt? No? Okay. So then the next Planning Commission meeting is Monday, December 1st at 6:00. Parks and Public Works next meeting is Monday, November 17th at 5:00. Health and Safety Committee report.
Yep, we just met before this meeting, and we reviewed City Code 635-57, all the active violations that we have in town in regards to on-street and off-street parking. We're trying to clean up some of the properties that have numerous different items parked within their yard, not on their driveway, whether or not it's an approved surface or not. So Luke is working on a list of, I think there were 67 violations. Most of them, some were on-street parking, but most of them is a variety of different things. So we're working on that. It sounds like letters will go out at some point, maybe next week. We'd like to get a lot of these addressed, too, before, especially the on-street items before snow flies. Discussion also about the rapid flashing beacon at crosswalk signs. The police chief has requested two of those signs to be purchased, so that will be going to council at some point. We also discussed short-term rental licenses. Most of these are verboes, things like that, so we are going to require an application process for short-term rental licenses, anything under 30 days. And it'll also fit in with our self-reporting room tax fees that are something that the city is able to... the city's not able to right now match what they receive in regards to these room taxes and short-term rental properties, so this is a way of them having consistent data for that as well. We have two open liquor license... licenses available, which is pretty exciting. We're lucky to have one, we have two. So starting in January, we will be sending out letters to all of the commercial properties that would be applicable to apply for these licenses, and will at some point be awarding those licenses after the application process is ended. We discussed the Halloween event at 887 Jefferson Street, which is fantastic. They do a lot for our community, and we'd like to work with the homeowners next Halloween so that we can offer maybe our assistance in creating a safer environment, because it's growing every year. They do a lot for our community, and we'd like to work with the homeowners next Halloween so that we can offer maybe our assistance in creating a safer environment because it's growing every year. So that was it.
Okay, thank you. So the next Health and Safety Committee meeting will be Monday, January 12th at 5:00. Personnel, next meeting, February 4th at 5:00. The next item on the agenda is communication and new business. Public comments, the city of council received public comments on any issue not related to the agenda. Any discussion by council may take place. However, no action will be taken on any items include receiving written requests or documentation, possible action at future meetings. Okay, hearing done. Next item is Tourism Committee 2025 Year Review and Approval of 2026 Budget. Megan?
Good evening, Megan Langer. I reside at N. 5127, 1180th Street, Prescott. I am the Prescott Tourism President.
Is it me?
Yeah, you got it. You should.
What do I? What do I do?
Technology.
All right, so we were established in 2022. We hold monthly meetings to try and grow our grant application, which has been a challenge. So our biggest accomplishments in 2025, we approved six grants so far. We hired a marketing firm to come on. We're working with them currently, and then they're going to go live January 1st with the new website. And then we've hired them for a campaign for all of 2026 on a monthly budget, monthly basis. They're also going to rebrand our, would be the entire brand, so our new logo, new color palette, and then they're going to redo all of our social media as part of that package as well. So Prescott Tourism Committee, we're going to do Winter Fest again. This will be our third Winter Fest in January. It's scheduled for, are we doing 2025? Are we doing a recap, not a preview?
We're doing a recap, yep.
Sorry, thank you guys, sorry. 2025, which was back in January of this year, we had our second annual Winter Fest, which was a success. We have a lot of participation downtown. Almost all of the restaurants and businesses are participating on a volunteer basis. At Petax Event Center, we had a beanbag tournament followed by a band that evening. And as a result, we did see an uptick in sales through the Airbnb and VRBOs that weekend, which did increase our room tax and bring in more money. Muddy Waters did bingo. That was the first time that they did bingo that that evening or that weekend, and they ended up having so much success with it that they continued to do that through the offseason on a every other Saturday basis. We've had a lot of outreach from other downtown businesses that didn't participate or didn't quite know what it was, saying, what are you guys doing? Can we participate? So we've had an increase in participation, which has been good. Freedom Park participated. They actually ran out of birdhouses that were donated for the kiddos, so that was fun to see. And then Cooley River Trail did their candlelight hike, and that was a success. I believe it was really cold, and it was still, it was bitterly cold, but it was still actually an increase from the previous year, even with the challenge of the weather. And then here's some pictures, Mid Yucca tournaments. So each of the bars, it's really kind of nice to see everyone working together. So Muddy Waters did bingo. So then a Yucca tournament was at, I believe that's Pro?
Is it the Tap?
Tap, Prescott Tap, thank you. You can see pictures of the birdhouses up at Freedom Park. There was bingo. I think, like I said, everyone just kind of worked together and then mirrored each other in the fact that they, you know, if if Muddy Waters started at 3, then the Yucca tournament would start at 5. So to kind of keep cohesion throughout the day and no one was really competing, it was sort of a complementing each other, if that makes sense. And then more of the dweebs at the Petax Event Center, some pictures from the Cooley Trail, the Beanbag Tournament. My eyes are getting so old. Am I the only one struggling to read that? One of the grants that was given was the Ferry Wonderland. They did their food truck event, and we were part of the donation process, so we supported them through a grant. If you're not familiar, Freedom Park, they do, it's actually a series of Thursday night, I believe it's Thursday night, music over a course of a few months. And so we donated, or they, excuse me, they filled out a grant and were awarded a grant. So that's been something that's very successful. We do see an uptick downtown based on the music, and we do see people renting the hotels downtown. So that was, I believe, their second year?
Second year.
It was their second year for the music. So that was a success, and that's growing, which is nice to see. So we still have a couple of grants that were awarded this year, but the events haven't happened or they haven't submitted their paperwork, so we do have some more money to come out. The Food Pantry was awarded, and we're waiting to distribute that money. The St. Croix Stars 4-H Club event is coming up, so they have been awarded their grant. We have to disperse it yet. So we do a reimbursement, so they have to have the event, pay for it, and then they get reimbursed. So that's why you'll see some of this stuff is back, it's because we're waiting for the paperwork to do the reimbursement. And then Winter Fest, which is our largest annual event, they were awarded a grant, and that event is happening in January as well. And our budget. So it looks like in 2000, I struggle reading this. I get so frustrated. She goes vertically, and I prefer horizontal, so, and my eyes are getting old.
So basically, in 2025, we budgeted the, we're keeping the revenue expenses the same, or the revenue coming in the same at that $40,523. And then on the expense lines, the biggest thing is we have the same amount of expenses. We did move a couple of things around, mainly moving more to marketing and less to the grants. And we thought for this year, because we haven't seen a huge uptick in our grant requests, that putting the money to marketing is going to better the entire community around, especially seeing the work that the company that we hired is doing. We're extremely excited about that to come.
I think I should congratulate the the people that sit on the Tourism Committee. I read the minutes, and you guys are doing a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, every year, it just grows.
Yeah, it gets better and better.
Yeah, it just gets better and better. There was definitely a learning curve, and there really aren't a lot of cities doing this locally. So the people or the cities that we were looking to emulate are much bigger than us, Eau Claire, La Crosse. So they're, they're playing in a different sport than we are. We have a much smaller budget. You know, Eau Claire might have a million-dollar budget, we have $40,000. And I am truly excited about Linda that we hired to do our marketing. She is actually the person that does Discover Polk County, so she was brought on to do their campaigns, if you see any of their stuff online. And then she does the one for St. Croix Falls, but it's, it's not, it's the St. Croix River Valley. So they even marketed it on purpose, so to do the valley so that they could use Taylor's Falls as a landmark, because so many people know where Taylor's Falls is, but they don't know where St. Croix Falls is, and that they're literally across the river. So by encompassing that, she broadens the horizons, and she can use some of the other areas as landmarks. It's just really ingenious and well done, and she's been working with them. And they do have the Tourism Dollar program as well, so she's familiar with that. So I'm extremely excited to see what she'll do. And she's local, so she's in St. Croix Falls.
Sounds promising.
Is that the last one? Okay, any questions?
No, it's just impressive every year. It's better and better.
Thank you.
Very nice job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor, we just need a motion to approve the Tourism Committee's 2026 budget.
Motion to approve the 2026 Tourism Committee budget.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the Tourism Committee budget. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose. Okay, for your consideration to Tourism Committee, Elizabeth Vetter. So then we'll approve that at the next meeting, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, other business. We have a intergovernmental meeting, Prescott Area Fire and EMS Association on Wednesday, January 14th at 7:00. Any other business? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go in closed session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to go into closed session. Is there any discussion on the motion? I need a roll call. Mike.
Aye.
Maureen.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Dar.
Aye.
Ben.
Aye.
Lindsay.
Aye.
Okay, ask y'all to leave.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming.